Do you do it in town?
Again, it's the one we do. I'm very good at working in downtown district. I'm seeing, I'm white, I'm very, this way. People very friendly. I'm totally busy. I did it with this.
I think we said one time, well, I see you giving away about five thousand. Just right.
Wow, that's a lot.
That's good. Where's that? It'll be advanced. It's a hundred percent.
I can't, I can't. No.
I'm sorry.
I don't know. I think.
Breakfast, cheese, cookies.
Come on, it's called crunk.
Where's the one the other person?
Looks like it didn't good.
There was one left. I can hear him laughing.
Okay, good morning, we have, um, Ken. What's your first name again?
Linebaugh.
Linebaugh, right, thank you very much.
Yeah.
And, um, we're going to, uh, run about forty minutes and, uh, so we just want everybody to have a little timer on this thing here so we can keep it going to about that time. Um, and, um, we left off, um, with Marco last night, I'm gonna start over here on this side. And we're just gonna run down the line and ask service questions.
Very good.
Do you wanna, since, um, Ms. Rich asked the last, or do you wanna start with Ms. Rolette? And then that way, everybody kinda gets a fair, what?
It's up to you.
Fair shot to do, 'cause I feel like, okay, I mean, I'm happy this.
I'm saying, we'll just do it, give it going that way.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, I guess my first question is, I'm gonna, um, what do you, what would you do? Or how would you handle a situation when your views on handling a specific policy issue, um, or situation differ from those of the governing body as a whole?
You mean the city council, mayor's city council?
The council, yeah.
Well, I would express my views and my justification as to why I have that point of view or recommendation, uh, to each member, uh, members as a whole. And, but the, the bottom line is, the council, a majority of council makes that final decision. Um, and my job is, at that point, if that is the wish of council and direction of council, to see that's carried out. When I would make my position known, I would explain why, and, uh, but again, at some point, you have to let that go and, uh, then it becomes, uh, my decision as well when the council, uh, makes a determination.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Oh, excuse me.
Go ahead. We all, it is, I think.
Glad you're here, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
You're familiar with your, at least Florida, um, city manager experience, uh, you know, extensive experience in management, um, of governmental entities. And we have a manager, council for government, and, um, you do the management, we do the policy, and the council, I will, uh, it's a good way to do it, I think. Tell me what you would do if I came to you one time in your office and I said, "Good morning, uh, I've got this idea, I think I want you to do this. I'm one council member and I come to you and I want you to do something, I'm intruding in your management, how do you deal with me?"
Well, of course, I'd be very respectful, but I would, uh, really remind you of, of, uh, the system in place and, uh, probably advise you, if, if you wish to pursue a course of action, that it be brought up to the councils as a whole, mayor councils as a whole, and discussed. Um, unless it's an administration, I'd recommend, you know, that, that let me look into it and respond to you. I mentioned yesterday, if you ask for information from me, I will be more than happy to provide it and provide it to everybody else. So everybody's on the same page and knows what's going on and why. And, uh, that's how we handle that situation.
Thank you.
Um, hi, my question is about, um, our website and our transparency and accessibility. So you had a little chance to kinda see us from afar, if you will. And maybe you could comment on what you liked or disliked, or what you might say we could do better.
Well, I like, I like the website, I like the information, I like how it integrates with other sites, such as the chamber and other points of interest. Um, I, I thought somehow, sometimes navigating it was a little complicated, at least for me, in terms of some of the documentation that I wanted to find. So I would probably try to, and I know you have, um, Civic Plus, as many, many as, I'm familiar with them, I've had them in the past in many, many municipalities, but I think probably the, the easier to, uh, obtain information, the better. And so I probably look at that and make sure that everything's updated and kept updated, because this is a window to the world, literally. And, uh, I think, uh, I think to have everything up to date and, uh, easy to access is of primary importance.
Okay, first off, um, would you be able to start on March the seventh, if you're so selected?
That would be tough for me, and, uh, it's, uh, for personal reasons. My wife is, uh, on a mission trip to Ethiopia until the twelfth. And so it would have to be the week of the twelfth.
Week of the twelfth.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Hey, um, like a lot of our communities, we're experiencing growth and development. And, uh, what would you do to protect the character of our community while still permitting all the acceptable growth that we're underlooking at?
Well, as, uh, as we discussed in the past, uh, I think the city of Moundora has two facets in terms of economic development, the, the, uh, the place to be, where we are right now, and then the growth along four forty-one and the like. Uh, I don't know that that area's gonna be identical to here. So I think the idea is to integrate the newcomers, if you will, uh, with the traditions and heritage of the, the old town, if you will allow me to call it that. Um, and to integrate them into the community. Uh, city government serves everyone, of course, and, uh, I think it's of paramount importance to make sure that, um, um, the new, new folks, new industries, new residents, uh, are indoctrinated to the, the values and the, uh, the traditions of the community and to, uh, provide mechanisms as we can to welcome them and, uh, assimilate them into the community.
Good morning. Could you give us a little insight into your experience with interacting with, uh, different government entities, an example being other cities and county and state?
I've, I've done a lot of that, that's, that's, uh, that goes with the territory, if you will. Um, I think it's very, very important to work cooperatively, whether it's, uh, federal government. I've gone to Washington, the lobby, uh, for a committee in the past, um, very active in the state, active in, uh, the professional associations that I've been, uh, a member of. So I think it's, uh, and the county especially, which is your back door or integrated along your community, I think is of primary importance. As you can see from my information, I worked for the county, Hillsborough County, for two years on a contractual basis. So I've become a lot more familiar with, um, county operations and, uh, an area that I was lacking in knowledge, I tried to fill, uh, in my experience background. So I think it's of crucial importance. We all serve the same people, just in different numbers. And so the more we can work together, uh, cooperatively, I think the better off we are. I do wanna say the bottom line is, uh, the city of Moundora comes first, uh, with all due respect, and I would be vigilant and aggressive for Moundora.
Hello, good afternoon, Kim. Um, what was your most difficult issue as city manager and how did you solve it?
Well, I think, uh, I think, uh, handling personnel is, uh, always a challenge. Um, my goal is to maximize, um, staff numbers and, by the way, uh, the information I've received is you have an excellent staff here. And, um, I, I congratulate you for that. But I think, um, where the train falls off the tracks and there needs to be changes, I think that's probably the most distasteful thing. If I would have to dismiss somebody, I would, but in the past I have. I do it reluctantly, but I do it for cause, that sort of thing. And I, um, I think that's probably the most distasteful and hard thing for me to do.
Kim, if, if, if you're our new interim city manager, um, what do you think would be the biggest challenge you would face coming into that role? And then conversely, um, the biggest opportunity that you might have?
Well, I think obtaining the lay of the land initially is of paramount importance. If I started on the twelfth or seventh or whenever it would be, I would, uh, come here like I've been here all my life and I would dive deeply, immediately into the character, the nature of the government, all aspects of the city. Uh, I think that's, uh, that's critically important, to know the, the people, to make yourself accessible and to be very active in the community. That would be my, my plan if I started, uh, serving the city of Moundora.
As far as outsourcing versus in-house provided services go, um, have you ever taken an existing in-house service and outsourced it and then vice versa? Taken something that has been outsourced and brought it in-house? And, um, in retrospect, did you make the correct decision? And what do you see as the pros and cons of, this is a long question, the pros and cons of, of, um, providing services in-house versus providing them outsourced? And then, um, as a follow-on to that, how often do you recommend, um, reviewing contracts? Anything from lawn mowing to legal services, whatever? What's your opinion on that?
I have, uh, I have done both. The most recent is the opposite of what you're doing here, is street sweeping. Um, we, uh, street sweeper is just a, um, uh, is a very, um, uh, labor-intensive operation that breaks down all the time and operates in a sandblast environment. So we went, uh, out, uh, outsourced it to, um, a private company instead of doing the street sweep, I'm just giving an example. I think of critical importance though is to, uh, my philosophy and the philosophy adopted by leadership is, uh, we don't put people on the street, unintended on the street. Um, we, uh, we've transferred that person-to-persons to available vacancies and care of our employees. I think that's, you're very, that's right. Um, what we've done in the past is, we've allowed, uh, a municipal agency, such as a public purse division, to bid along with the private entities. And if it's relatively close, even somewhat close, keep it. So that kinda lead, and the pros and cons, um, sometimes you can save money, but you lose control, um, direct control, unless you write some elaborate, elaborate, uh, contract. So I, I think there is a give and take and, uh, uh, sometimes you just hate to give up what a city does. Yeah, at some point, you, you know, folks begins, begin to, especially like public safety and the like, then why are we here? You know, so I think there's a fine line you have to be very careful about. I think contracts should be reviewed, generally speaking, three to five years, just to make sure everything's, uh, cohesive.
Thank you.
As you probably know, um, given in reviewing the history of Moundora and its very eclectic, uh, environment, uh, and you probably know that we have received in the last couple of years, a number of national awards and regional awards for the best place to retire and the friendliest place to live and, um, most opportunity for this and most opportunity for that, which, of which all of us here at this table and in the audience are very proud. We've also received very recently a lot of criticism in the media that you've heard about, obviously. If there is a healing process needed at the council level to deal with that disparity, how would you go about trying to promote that healing level in the council or that change of direction or whatever it may be?
Uh, well, if there's a, if there's a healing process necessary for council, um, a practice I followed in the past is, and it's in conjunction with our budgetary process, in the community I served before, where I retired, we had a budgeting process, which I understand you've done, um, that council goal setting session. We had, um, a gentleman facilitate that, uh, away from the council chambers, you know, in a, in a public meeting, of course, but, uh, around the table. And incorporated team building as well as budget decisions, overall policymaking and the like. So I think that, and we did it anyway. And I think that fostered, uh, more understanding among members and staff, frankly, and, uh, facilitated, uh, working together and working through differences. It's inevitable that, that we have differences of opinions, how we handle them and how they happen. My ideal is, uh, we argue like crazy and then shake hands and walk out the door together. That's what I would like to see and work towards.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're gonna get into the budget cycle right here pretty soon. So I'm sure you thought about it a little bit. How's it gonna go? Or, or what things, you know, do you like to see in a budget document that maybe you didn't see in ours or just, like, wide open?
Well, obviously, it's the most, probably the most significant thing that, uh, the city does every year, 'cause it's the, um, the generator for all the activities of a, of a community. I did read the budget. I think overall you have a, a very good budget and I would wanna learn more of the intricacies of the budget process that have, uh, been done here. I don't just believe that, you know, I, I have all the answers in the world, um, and I wouldn't come in to change things or recommend changes just because they're changes. Um, some of the areas that I have done in the past, or not I, that we've done in the past would be a little bit of performance data. Kinda like, um, what is your money buying for, generally speaking? And be careful, because you can have just, you know, uh, coming visits and some nonsensical type of data. It really needs to be meaningful, it's how the program is progressing and doing. But I would propose coming, uh, through our staff members, learning from them, uh, working with them, coming to you and, and suggesting that perhaps you have a policy, budget policy workshop? And we could present the ideas to you and ask, you know, and make sure that you're on board with that and then, um, proceed with implementing on the, on the budgetary document.
I had a phone call, um, something, um, this is still brought up about the insourcing and, um, or in-house versus the, uh, the outsourcing. Um, when you, he said you get the, you got bids, um, you know, from outside, but then also you like the, the, um, in-house department, then also.
Correct.
Okay. Um, how do you go about making sure that you got two documents that are apples to apples as far as, you know, when you go to the outsourcing, you're gonna, they're gonna have all their costs, we know they're gonna have all their costs, and they're, they're a very profitable organization. Um, EM in-house is nonprofit, so how, how do you make sure you're looking at, uh, apples to apples at that part?
Well, I think the, um, the best way is to make sure that you, you should have specifications of what you require. What are the, uh, levels of service? Let's take sanitation, for example. Frequency of pickup, um, how to handle complaints, um, a variety of measurable data to ensure that everybody, first of all, is bidding on the same thing, of critical importance. And then afterwards, in the implementation, make sure they do what they say, that they are giving you the value for your dollar bid. And, uh, to monitor and make sure it works. So I think writing specific specifications is of very, great importance and make sure everybody is bidding on the same thing.
Right, um, just, you've been following that a little bit, the, um, when we're looking at the, the cost factor, okay? And I realize the, you know, the, uh, everybody's bidding on the same, the same line and that were your specs and specifications, but it's the, um, what they're putting into their cost and, um, from that standpoint. You know, the benefits, all the.
All the, all the.
Labor costs.
Everything goes into, into that thing, into the bids, and, and that's, I think, what I'm getting at.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Than the specification. Well, there's probably everything from equipment placement cost to, um, uh, cost and profit analysis. I think, uh, it, it does, when there are labor costs, benefits, um, obviously an hour, hourly wage, that sort of thing, all those things go into, you know, in, uh, computing the, um, cost of service. And probably some future capital, I think you have equipment replacement fund, for example, um, I've seen in the past at least. So there are variety factors that have to be delineated and, um, requested from all vendors or bidders.
Thank you. Can you tell us a little bit about the experience I have with, uh, city enterprise operations and the funds and the funding?
Over the course of my many years of city government, I've dealt with a lot of, uh, a lot of departments and enterprise funds. I started in my first Florida job at an electric utility as an enterprise fund. You know, and as you know, enterprise fund is a, it's a really a self-contained business within the city operations. Sewer, water, we even had an airport, once a small airport, so a little bit of everything. But, uh, I've dealt with, uh, a variety of, uh, and even a cemetery, my first, um, assistant city manager's job, uh, a long time ago, but, uh, as an enterprise fund. So I, I have dealt with them and realize they're a kinda self-contained unit within the, the city structure. And, uh, you know, to make sure that it operates, uh, at least, uh, a cost-effective basis.
We do own a cemetery.
I know you do, that's why I brought it up.
Okay, what was the most controversial issue that you experienced with your past board or council? And how'd you solve it?
Well, probably, um, hmm, let me sort through a few of those. Um, I would say, uh, redevelopment in my past community was, uh, very, was very contentious. Um, we had a, uh, we had specified it had, um, developers come in and it was a master developer, it was incremental, um, development. And, uh, the developer had, um, ideas, the key issue was residential units. The community wanted condominiums owner occupied, the developer wanted grounds. And that became a very divisive issue on council and in the community. And, uh, frankly, uh, we had several, and I, and I'm an advocate of having, uh, community meetings to make sure everybody gets what's going on and that, a couple of them were really, um, well, diners too. And I, um, I stood up and gave my recommendation in front of a, a group of a couple hundred people that, um, I felt like the regulations did not preclude apartment. I thought that we could specify, uh, people worried that it would deteriorate, that sort of thing, I thought we could specify to the advantage of the community that, uh, we would maintain a high quality of, of more luxury apartments. But it's very contentious, uh, but the bottom line is, the council, um, denied that request and ended the contract with the developer. And then it became my, uh, job along with staff and legal counsel to implement that decision. Kinda goes back to one of the earlier questions, uh, you may not agree, uh, you recommend the best for the community, as everybody is doing, uh, in their, um, considerations. But then in the bottom line is, once a decision's made, you make sure that it happens. And so it was uncomfortable, um, but, uh, that's part of the territory at times, hopefully not too much, but at times it certainly happens.
Thank you very much.
Kim, let's say you're the successful candidate, our, our new interim city manager. How do you get started? What's that first week look like? What are the priorities?
Well, I think, uh, well, very busy, but I, I would expect to be very busy for the entire duration of the assignment. I would wanna meet with staff members immediately. I want to, uh, uh, find out about them, let them find about me. I'd wanna know about my management style and practice and I don't want them at ease. I'm here to make things work with them and in, in the course of cooperation with Mayor and City Council. So my first job, I think, would be to meet with the staff members and then I'd like to meet with the council. That would be in a different venue than we've had in the past two days and that is, um, now that we're giving down the mid-grading, you know, can we talk a little bit more about the city and your desires, goals and that sort of thing? And then the community as well, uh, people in the community I would, uh, always welcome. Talking to folks and finding out as much information as possible. I, I would be a sponge to absorb information and strive to do so. And then, uh, once I started, then my feet on the ground, would be coming back to you with, uh, any suggestions and recommendations.
Kim, um, what's your opinion of sole source procurements? And, and when do you feel that they're beneficial and do you, you know, shy away from them or, anyway, just sort of general discussion on that?
Generally speaking, I, I would prefer not sole source. I like competition, but there are times when it's inevitable. So, um, it is done, I think it should be like salt, you know, you don't put on too much and taste good. I think you should do it sparingly as much as you can, but it is a, it is sometimes, um, a necessary thing to do. So, uh, I just think it's something that needs to be, uh, looked at and watched and monitored, that sort of thing, and make sure that, uh, you're really receiving what you specified or what you wanted.
Could you just, would you explain some of those, uh, specific instances where you, you, you find them acceptable?
Um, probably, um, we've had some like equipment, that only one manufacturer make equipment. Um, and we try to check with other communities and see what they, and I do, I've done a lot of, uh, uh, piggyback work with other communities, you go back to intergovernmental relations. In the Hillsborough area, we all specified with the provision that other governmental entities would be allowed to utilize these specifications, save some money. The county of a, of a million peoples buy a lot more trucks than a community of twenty-five thousand, for example, so it was very cost-effective. But you check with other communities and, uh, kinda use them as a barometer that, uh, your sole source is economically, uh, justifiable as well.
It looks like your, uh, most recent experience in Hillsborough County was a contract position.
Yes.
And, uh, it looks like you had an interesting, uh, two years to try to help, help that county. You can tell me a little bit about that, but I know it's in your resume, but, uh, just a little bit about challenges there and in particular, what you've been doing since October two thousand fifteen?
Okay. That one's easy, that last part. I did work for the county, um, I knew the county administrator professionally and it is, uh, like the equivalent of city manager for a government-led county. And, uh, he asked me to help him out on special projects, um, at resources, uh, the procurement division, a variety of, uh, of, uh, agencies, which I found intriguing, I really enjoyed it. It's, uh, he, they're, uh, they're general staff, they're five thousand. So my eyes were opened in terms of, um, of the spectacle of, of county government. And I found it very, very, um, enlightening and useful in, like, future dealings. So I enjoyed doing the special jobs and I went in, I guess, just like I would adhere and then met people, uh, worked together, came up with, uh, solutions and, um, they worked out, they worked out for the county for myself. I've been kind of a house husband since I've stopped that, um, but I tell you, there's no end of work around the house, so, um, I somehow wanna be safe from that sometime. Maybe that's one of the reasons that I'm here. I've enjoyed my retirement, I haven't retired, I started nineteen seventy-one, that's, that's a long time. So I, I've enjoyed it, but, uh, I can't get city government out of my blood and system. It's always there and, uh, I don't think I'll ever be, uh, able to dismiss it entirely. So I, I just have to keep trying to keep a toe in the water every so often.
Just as a follow-up, uh, I'm assuming here you would say yes to the fact that all your experiences the last two years in, in county contract, uh, putting out brush fires or helping to, uh, improve the county government, I'm assuming would be a significant help to a city manager, you'd working with the county as well, because you've kinda been there and done that at the county level, is that true?
That's correct, you can be empathetic. I can be more empathetic with what the county's going through and vice versa now. I think it helps kinda bridge that, um, I don't know, I should say gap, but difference between the two entities. So I think it is, has helped me to pass.
Thank you.
That's great. So here's kind of an open question for you. So you're starting on whatever date, um, you know, and the first day, we have the ability for you to just ask for anything you want. Price is no object, just what is it that makes you most successful that we could do to help you?
Well, I think just to, uh, I just believe in open and, uh, just transparent communication. I think to, um, if we all, you know, knowing that this is the path we're gonna work down toward the ultimate goal of selecting your city manager in the future, that, uh, if we all decide on what we wanna do and, uh, strive to do it from our perspectives of our respective duties and responsibilities, um, I think that's of key importance. And of course, when I talk about myself, I, I'm including your staff members, I think that's awfully important to integrate, uh, their input, their part of that process. But I, there's an overall goal that you have here, I, I'm sure, and that is, uh, to, uh, bring, um, your, the, the chief administrative officer in, have everything ready to go, that sort of thing, and, um, work together to accomplish that.
Thanks. Speaking of, um, city manager position down the road, would you be, uh, one of the applicants or think yourself to be one of the applicants down the road?
Yeah, I would never say a hundred percent no, but in all likelihood, I would not.
And, um, what, during this interim period, uh, what personal characteristic, um, do you have that would benefit the residents of, um, of our city if we hired you?
Well, I'm a good listener. Well, I'm a good listener and I enjoy people. Uh, you can't be in this business if you don't. And, um, I think the job is to, uh, my philosophy, I have two philosophies that I implemented in my last assignment. One is when people come in, don't say no, say why not first. Let's not say no right off the bat. Let's say why not? Secondly, um, my predecessor had a, uh, a, a quote, the quote for the city was citizens are our customers. I changed that. They're not our customers. They're our stockholders. They own the company. And I would like to see, um, the, uh, the, uh, city represent to the people that they do own the company, knowing there are going to be differences of opinion, knowing they can't always do everything that people want. But, but approach them in that philosophy that, uh, they do own the company and in fact they don't. And let's, uh, let's work together in that, um, atmosphere as much as we can.
Can you let us know a little bit about your experience in, uh, writing policy and procedures for, uh, presentation to a governing body?
I've done a lot of that to, over the years, over the course of years. I try to, honestly, I try to be as succinct as possible and, uh, not preliminous. I will do attachments. I, I prepared like the report for the county administrator. It was like 78 pages of pet resource stuff, simple. But the recommendation and the analysis was like three pages. And in reference to, uh, if, if the, uh, elected body, if the members want to get in more depth, that was available to them. But I believe in being succinct and coming right out, this is, uh, this is, this is the matter. This is the issue. This is what it's involved. That's what I recommend. And again, I've done that, uh, for a very, very long period of time. But I would like to say if, if that doesn't mean that there are, if the elected body as a whole would like something a little bit changed, of course, I'm more than happy to accommodate that need.
Okay, um, what was the most controversial issue that you experienced with your past council board?
Probably the redevelopment and the developer.
That one, okay. Maybe I, um, with all the press and articles in the past few months, what's been going on here in Montevideo, what would your solution be to, to pull us together?
Well, probably, um, communication is the key of everything. I have enough right here to know that, uh, that's where 99.9% of right now occurs through miscommunication, non-communication. So I think it's important that everybody knows what's going on equally and partially. I would urge council, if, if it appears that needs arise, to get together and, uh, work out the, um, the semantics of, of council work, working together, uh, whether that be an outside facilitator or myself or other staff members. But to promote, um, active communication, active listening, active participation and, uh, problem solving, that sort of thing.
Thank you.
You, you touched on redevelopment.
Yeah.
And, and we have a couple of important CRAs, um, within the, the city. That, can you talk a little bit about working in that venue?
Yeah, you have the northeast and the central area. That's, that's correct. CRA is a very, uh, a good instrument provided for, uh, communities to concentrate on areas of, of need. You know, the money stay in the CRAs. It really helps focus the, uh, I guess, the, uh, the measures and tools available to cities to, uh, improve areas and to, uh, keep them up to, up to snuff and keep them up to a high quality of, uh, appeal. Yours is, you know, obviously very, uh, very successful. Now, you can just look with the traffic patterns and parking and so forth. And that might be something that a, uh, CRA funding could do. You could concentrate on some of the challenges in the area and, uh, work to resolve them through, um, the dedicated funds to do so. But, uh, I've worked with CRAs in the past. When we did a, uh, a deal with the county in Hillsborough County, it was a 30-year CRA with their participation. It was like 10 years at 100% of their tax money. Went down to 80 and went back to them and we changed it to 100% for 30 years. So it was, uh, it's very important. Again, it gets back, all this relates to all of these questions, uh, intergovernmental relations and working together because it benefits the county as well through their taxation process and the value of properties in the CRA. So, um, very important, a very key tool in the box for communities and, uh, development of the, of the community. They've been.
I did too, actually. I did too. I was trying to sort of stick to the same questions. Um, what innovative cost-saving programs or projects have you initiated? And how successful were they? And were they short-term or long-term?
Probably the most successful was automating our reader meeting, our meter reading system for water. Uh, we did it in-house. It took, uh, probably, uh, seven or eight years to change out 7,000 meters. Because first of all, couldn't afford all of them. We had to do it incrementally through the budgetary process. But we changed it to a wand reading system that really sped it up. And eventually had the capabilities of even radio that you could drive by and obtain the, the radiance on the meters. So that was very successful. It resulted in an initial output of really two systems, but evolved in one where it was much more automated, much more cost-effective and saved the city money.
This council has previously, about a month ago, as I recall, agreed to pursue a Florida League of Cities workshop process to review our council differences in the next month or two. I think we all value that get-together. How do you feel about doing that? And would you, would you certainly support that?
Absolutely. I do support that. I think it's a good idea. I just think it's a good, uh, a good thing to do periodically regardless. I think it's a, a good time for self-evaluation to ascertain whether, you know, maybe we're wanting a little bit off-base a little bit and bring us back, that sort of thing. So I, I do support it and it leads to back to communicating and to understanding one another. As you're all working, because you all have the, the heart of the city at yours and, uh, you want to see the best for it. And people have differences in how to get there and that really helps understand, promotes understanding and cohesiveness, in my opinion.
Yeah, okay. So there's a lot of, a lot of different areas in the city. Is there any area that you're not, um, as comfortable working with that we could assist you with more help? Or, or just why don't?
Well, I hate to say, I'm pretty familiar with Montevideo's house too, the etymical. I'm always learning and there's always new things and new aspects. But I have looked at your budget, I've looked at your departments, your enterprise funds, your special use funds and the like. And I have dealt with those in the past over the course of 42 years. And I'm not going to say that again. 42 years sounds really a long time. But each has its own characteristics, uh, idiosyncrasies, if you will. And to be aware of those and, uh, some of the differences would be very helpful, I think. Overall, I'm dealt with, um, most if not all types of, um, operations.
We're getting right down to the end. I'm going to ask a question and follow up on, um, something Mr. Ross had just mentioned. That we're, we're looking at doing something, um, you know, we're with the League, you know, with the League of Cities to, um, come some kind of a workshop, pretty easily, that's what you want to call it, combined meeting type thing, you know, which is great. But also, uh, talked about earlier too, about, uh, the fact of a, um, a goals, uh, goals and objectives, a very big part of a city council's responsibility, okay? Do you, do you envision those, those two kind of workshops being combined into one?
It depends upon the, the need. I think that, um, if it's really a team-building session, I think that should be done at least initially separately. But I think ultimately it could be incorporated into an annual goal-setting session. Like how things happened in the past, what we've done, that sort of thing, without talking about the mechanics of, uh, team building and the sort and the like. I think initially I would recommend a separate. Single session.
And we reached, we reached the end today.
All right.
So I want to thank you. Is there any, any other questions present with you?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for having me. I, I consider an honor. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.